It's 6:00 PM. I'd like to call it to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. May we all please rise and pay respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll.
Noted, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, and I would like to amend the agenda. And I would like to add item 12J. And the 12J item is Master Plan Steering Committee Compensation. 12J? 12J. Master Plan Steering Committee Compensation.
I'll make a motion for the agenda as amended.
Second? A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knowles. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none.
Should that be a vote because it involves money?
Yes.
Are you voting to vote or not?
Oh, no, no, at the... Not amending the agenda doesn't...
Okay.
Let me talk about that topic.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, item number five, open session.
I'll make a motion to an open session, entertain a motion, take roll call vote regarding calling a closed session for following purposes: To consider confidential legal opinion in accordance with MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.243L and G.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knowles. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, members of the audience, camera person. We have a closed session. We should convene after we talk about this one subject, and you're all welcome back. Okay. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion?
I would accept the settlement offered made by Brinker, authorized by township supervisor. Please do the settlement and release regarding the same.
Second?
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to allocate the funds, if approved, to the police contracting fund for the above-mentioned settlement.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. I'll second that motion. Any questions?
This is protocol we've done in the past?
We've never had it, this guy's a little...
We're... Motion where the money goes.
Correct.
Where did you say?
Police contract.
Except for the $5,000.
Correct. Very good, Mark.
Which would be for general fund?
Yeah, for the legal fees.
Comment on my motion where... Can you state the amounts, Brittany?
Yes.
There are $15,000 with the police contracting fund, $5,000 for general fund.
I'll second my motion. Okay, questions? I'll start with Trustee Charles.
So what's the impact of $15,000 bucks versus the general fund?
It provides policing services.
Well, it reduces our obligation, I know what we're talking about, but what's the impact of that? Just covers some of our costs?
Yes.
Our legal fees.
And then the $5,000 for the legal fees. Clerk Wright?
Two motions on the floor must vote on the amendment before the main motion.
So we vote on the wrong one first.
We vote on the one to allocate the $5,000 off of the $20,000 first, and then you vote the second one. So you probably approve the second one and vote the second, first one down.
Okay.
Circuit Secretary?
Roll call on the first motion.
Correct, you could vote the first motion down and make a new motion, the way it should be. That's up to you.
Okay, we'll take a roll call on the first motion.
The original motion?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Charles?
No.
Clerk Wright, no. Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Knowles?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Okay, the second motion, would you read it again, Treasurer Ferrari?
To authorize for the $20,000 settlement, $15,000 is allocated to police contracting fund, $5,000 for general fund.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knowles. Now, are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no. And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number six, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda as presented.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Knowles. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll calls.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item number seven, public comments on items not on the agenda. Any members of the public like to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Board of trustee comments. I'll start on a rate tonight. Trustee Colvin?
I have no comments at this time.
Trustee Payne?
I have nothing to say.
Trustee Knowles?
No comment at this time.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No comment at this time.
Hey, you guys are good.
We got it at the end, too.
Yeah, I have one comment. I want to thank Susan for working very hard and diligently. She turned into our payroll ADP. ADP files with the state, the retained employee credit, and then the amount of $200,000 approximately. ADP forwards that onto the state. Within 90 days, we will have our recommendation. And I've been told that the state basically kind of puts the money out there a little bit at a time. But a lot of hard work went into it. Thank you, Susan, for getting our earned retention credit, the amount of approximately $200,000. I know the fire department is working on theirs, and we should have theirs in shortly. Other minute? Clerk Wright?
Just so people are aware, tomorrow, Chamber of Commerce is having their business expo. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock at the Boulder Park, I believe, for that. And tomorrow, the clerk's office is going to Oakland County, so our office will be vacant. From 1:30 on, we don't know when we're coming back. But we're going down there to finalize the 98 early voting contract with Oakland County and participating municipalities, which will include Orion, Oxford, and Addison at this point, with what we're trying to do for early voting to get a centralized location. Right now, it's proposed for Orion Township at this point. So these are meetings we are obligated to go to, and we have to go to to keep up with the changes that have been put in place for proposal 22-2. And those are my comments.
Okay, well, we will have support for the clerk's department tomorrow. Thank you. Trustee Charles?
First of all, thanks to Danielle on the MTA conference for those who are going. I appreciate the follow-up from the organization. Another thing, on the next board meeting we have, I'd like to have an item placed on the agenda. Is this the appropriate time to request that, Supervisor Curtis?
Sure is.
I'd like to get back into the single waste hauler issue that we discussed for the last whatever months it's been. So if you can put that on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Okay.
And then a quick question, too, on the food truck ordinance. Does that include a timeline for when somebody can have a truck parked? Does anyone go off the top of their head?
You mean the length of time?
Right.
No, it does not include that in the ordinance.
Is that something we should look at doing at some point? Could someone potentially park a truck there for three weeks and say they've met all the requirements? Or should we put a timeline on it for parking the truck there?
Yes, yes, they can. And should we put a time limit on it? I don't know, how would we do that? Would we bring it up as a board item?
You would...
Yes.
You would actually, since it's an ordinance, you would present it back to the board, and then the protocol we're following now is that entertain other than not the board of law on a set of first reading of the amendment to, in this case, the mobile for the establishment ordinance.
Does that make sense? What's the protocol? If it comes to your office?
I'd put it on the agenda. We'd have to approve the revision of the ordinance.
Okay, would you do so?
Yep. Do that. By the way, we do have two complaints right now.
Really?
Yep.
Should this be a... Can I come out?
Okay.
Can we have the conversation on that right now?
No.
Okay.
We'll have one. This is not on the agenda. Okay, is that it? Trustee Charles?
That's it for now.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, fire department? Chief?
Good evening, everybody. Just some real brief updates. Chief Esper and I went to the MTA Public Safety Event yesterday up in Frankenmuth. It's really... The MTA did a very nice job of presenting issues relative to the fire and EMS services and recruitment and retention and things of that nature here in Michigan because of the shortage that so many departments are experiencing, ours included. But it was a very good, very informative event. It was a long day, but it was definitely worth the time and the trip up there. We are also waiting to hear back on... We've been working with ADP as well on retain credit stuff, so hopefully we'll have some decent idea here in the very near future. And then the last two items, and just for everybody's, you know, awareness and hopefully get everybody out and get some people. October 8th, we will be having our annual open house at the fire station on Lefier Road, headquarters, that is, you know, noon to four on October 8th. And then, as usual, and just put it out there early, because tis the season, right? Cider and Donuts will be once again at, on Halloween evening. And we'll start at about an hour before, kind of, or right around the time trick-or-treating ends. And that's up to you folks, so, as you know, so just to...
All stations.
Well, it'll be at all stations, yeah, for the cider and donuts, yeah. But the open house will only be at...
Right.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the chief? I have one.
Yes, sir.
How's the fire truck coming along?
Are you talking about the ones we've ordered?
The ones we paid for.
Well, that one, we said about 40 months for delivery.
40 months?
About 40 months, yeah.
With your hurry.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and that's the one we ordered last year. I think we're still at about 28 months out. And the ambulance that was supposed to be here before Christmas, if we're lucky, might be here by June of next year, which we're still in the process of, obviously, through our capital improvement plan and trying to replace all the ambulances, because, as you know, they're all over 10 years old. They're all over 150,000 miles. So we're working diligently on trying to... We've got an ambulance committee, and we're evaluating what's going to be the best route and try and get us on a much better rotation of stuff, right? So to... And we are working on some grant stuff throughout Northern Oakland County with other departments, a large consortium grant that we're trying for. And then we had submitted that grant earlier in the year for reimbursement for equipment that we've purchased. I checked today, some departments have gotten notice, and ours has worked its way up to it's under review. So, and so far, I've not heard of anybody getting denied. But there's always a first, so, you know. But that one's for 10 grand, so.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
Trustee Charles?
Would this be a good time to ask him about this food truck ordinance time issue?
No.
Okay.
We'll wait. Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I gotta take a quick break here for a minute, because I told our supervisor from the south that our meeting started at 6:30. And in camaraderie and spirit of the Orion-Oxford football game, last time we won, I took the jersey down to Orion, and Supervisor Barnett gratefully wore it. Oh, you brought the biggest one you had.
It's the biggest one they make, I think.
Yeah, so what the spirit of this is, is if Orion wins, I get to wear the Orion jersey at a township board meeting. If Oxford wins, he wore the jersey, so gracefully.
I bring greetings from the southern regions of Oxford. And I just... Sorry, my hair's... I just got a dunk tank.
And I heard about the speedo.
Yeah.
I saw your wife there, but yes, it was a great game, and...
Let me come around the front.
Yeah, you guys started early. I actually was on time someplace.
Yes, I know that. And I thought, shoot, he's not here, he might not show up. So I said I would wear this, you know. How are we gonna get this on? This is the biggest jersey they make.
It is.
In Orion, oh!
This is gonna be the hard part, this part here.
Nah, this is the good part.
Look at that, he looks good, doesn't he?
Yeah.
All right.
How about with the board?
Yeah, yeah.
So the board supports the rivalry between Oxford and Orion. Thank my friends from the south.
All right, perfect.
Perfect.
These will never show up at any Orion Township, State of the Township, or grounds, I promise.
Thank you, brother.
Thanks for the work, you guys, you're gonna see it.
Don't take off yet, Chris.
All right.
I just want to tell the board that in this wonderful, fun things we do, we learn a lot from each other. Chris has been very responsible and helpful to Oxford. We don't have to steal anything from him, from ideas. He gracefully gives it to us. And we've made a lot of improvements over the year from learning from other townships, and Chris is one of them. Chris leads our OCATs, which is the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors, where we meet and discuss legislative matters. We learn how to do things through different governmental organizations. Chris was the chairman of SEMCOG. Chris is very active in a lot of activities around the state of Michigan, so he's very helpful to Oxford and North Oakland Strong. So I thank you, very proud to wear this. I hope it doesn't stain my shirt.
I have a recommendation, though, that the next time it's a swim meet, you guys don't...
It's a great relationship, thanks. Thank you, Jack, and thank you all. We're grateful to have amazing partners with Oxford. We have a lot of fun, but we're doing a lot of great things. And Jack has been a stalwart for Northern Oakland County and absolutely the hospital project, and we're doing the best we can to try to support in that effort as well. So thanks for being a good sport, great, even a better neighbor, and great friend. So thank you all, and we're happy to help whenever we can, so.
Thank you.
I gotta take that pic... I have to take this picture now.
Yeah, now you have to. Chris is coming from the dunk tank for the...
Real men wear pink.
Real men wear pink.
It's happening in Washington Square right now, so.
Yeah.
Is that what it's called?
Yes.
Yeah. So, all right, thanks, everyone, have a great meeting.
Thanks, Chris, get back in the tank.
It's a DDA thing, Chris.
All right, thank you for allowing me to take that break. Item number 10, Sharp Engineering Report. Everybody got the report in their package? Are there any questions? I have just one. Where are we at with the safety path on North Oxford Road and Ray Road? How long till we complete that?
So the rest of the asphalt was placed today. There's a small stretch in front of the Meyer Gas Station. That portion was placed today. So the only real pathway items left to do are the ADA ramps at the driveways. There's six of them total. The exit and the entrance to the student parking lot, and then where the bus drive is. They were originally scheduled to do that today, but they didn't get there. So they're supposed to be there tomorrow morning, first thing. And then after that, it's just restoration.
Okay. I want to thank Jim. This has been a real royal pain. We were cheated... We were slated out of some federal funds. The Safety Path Committee jumped up, got on it. But Jim's been working hard, Superior Excavating, along with C&amp;M, Trucking and Excavating, along with Levy Corporation, Levy Company, again, call them corporation, donating the 12,000 tons of gravel. It's just been Ryan Austin with BSI. It's been monumental. We put this path in. It'll be about a month now since we approved the funding, and it's almost done. It's 5,200 feet?
Yeah, it's a mile, 5,200 feet.
It's a mile of safety.
That's amazing.
Thank you to Jim, all of our contractors, and the Safety Path Committee. When we bust hump, we make tears, but we still make things happen, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass that along to them. Any other questions?
Good job. Jack, would Jim's report... So we can put that on our website. It's so informative. It'd be nice if people could go on our website and say, oh, this is what the township's doing.
I will put that on the things to do website, engineering report. Thank you, Jim. All right, thank you. Okay, unfinished business, number 11. Item A, committee compensation. Nancy Owens is here, along with the Compensation Committee. We've been meeting, took back the charge to come up with committee... Understanding of committee compensations. Nancy, do you want to?
Absolutely, do we have the...
The PowerPoint? Yeah. We do.
It's nice to see all of you again. Thank you for having me back. Tonight, really, what I'm gonna do is, I'm sure that all of you probably know the majority of this. I'm gonna go over some of the basics of it and really talk about compensation for the board, what kinds of compensation are available, how you determine what those compensations are. Basically, we want to talk about what you can do, what you can't do, and then what the recommendations were from the committee so far. Okay, so the first thing we want to talk about, different ways you can be compensated. Right, so you can be compensated via salary. All board members are eligible to receive a salary, and that salary covers your statutory duty performance. There's also per meeting or per diem pay. That's available only to trustees, and you can have one, but not the other. The other pay of obviously reimbursement, which would follow along policies for expenses, and we'll talk about each one of these. Then there's non-statutory duty pay, which can be the most confusing one of all of them. And then finally, you can have, as a trustee, you can be paid a combination of any and all of the above. Officers are restricted to pay salary pay for their performance of their statutory duties, which is pretty much everything, so there are limited opportunities for additional income, but not really. All right, so let's talk about how you determine that with the salary. There are three main methods. One is an annual meeting, which I'm listing just to be comprehensive, but it's really not available to charter townships anymore. That's only an option available to general law townships. The other one is a compensation committee, which goes into setting up an actual committee made up of residents that determine the compensation. They set it, it gets voted on. It's a very cumbersome process, not used by very many townships, less than 4% across the state. What Oxford currently does, and what the majority of townships do, is they use the township board resolution method. So it's not tied to a fiscal year. I know that we're doing this in preparation for your budget year. It's not tied to anything. There are certain restrictions, but in general, you can set compensation at any time that you would choose to by resolution. All right? I don't have my glasses, so I have to look at my own notes. So which meetings can be compensated? So obviously, the board of trustee meetings can be compensated. Also, meetings that you might attend or other statutory bodies, like the zoning board or the planning commission. Generally, if pay is provided to the members of those commission, it's favored that, you know, a board member would be given pay for that as well. Also, board of trustee committee meetings, and we'll talk about those a little bit and the setup of those, but you can be compensated for board of trustee committee meetings that the board establishes. And then other pre-approved meetings, where you might not be a member of that governing body, but you need to attend on behalf of the township for some reason. The examples in here are pretty good ones. If you have to attend a single hauler meeting so that you can come back and report to the board about what was going on. Or during COVID, if there were special meetings that a member might have went to, you know, with the health department, and you're coming back and informing. Those types of meetings. And we'll talk about that, but generally, they're pre-approved meetings, and then you're compensated for them when you achieve the goal of what you're there to tend for. So when we talk about township committee compensation, as you know, the board sets subcommittees. This report is a product of the compensation subcommittee. Those committees should be formed when they are formed. Who's going to serve on it should be set, what the goal is, if there is any compensation, and for what, at that time of the formation is when those formalities should be ironed out. Be careful that when you are designing a committee, obviously, if you have four board members, that subjects you to open meetings act, the notice requirements, meeting requirements, and things like that. As it stands, if a subcommittee in the advisory capacity, you don't need to have the public notice and such, but you would need to report back to the full board based upon what the purpose of that subcommittee was. Any questions so far? I don't want to whiz through. All right. Obviously, reimbursement. This is limited to actual expenses and should follow the written policy, which is being reviewed as well, and making sure they're in compliance. Things like mileage for attending meetings can be included if that's part of the reimbursement policy, with the exception of you can't receive mileage for coming to the board of trustee meeting. That's just part of the... That's just part of the job. And then there should be a reconciliation of expenses that are paid back to board members, at least monthly. That should be the general rule. All right? Any questions on reimbursement? Okay, so non-statutory duty pay. This is the one that gets the most questions. Generally, the first question to ask is going to be, is this additional service outside of the statutory duties? It needs to be outside of the statutory duties for it to be considered non-statutory duty pay. So when you think of this, we think of like quasi, like employees. So it might be that one of you steps in to perform a service that is normally done by an employee. The examples that MTA likes to use are if somebody's gonna do a part-time job working at one of the plants, and you're gonna be available with the pump. You're gonna be paid like an employee, because that's not part of your statutory duty. The question that comes in, though, that has to be asked, as we say, this is a non-statutory duty, is doing this work in any way part of my statutory duty? So, for example, trustees' duties are listed as very, pretty much, pretty vague, but it requires voting on everything and making sure that the bills get paid. So you have to make decisions about how the township operates, right? So the preparation of getting ready to make those decisions is within the statutory duty. That's the question to ask. Does this fall outside the purview, or is this just something that I have to do in order to be prepared to execute my duties? So that's the easiest way to look at it. The other caveat for non-statutory duties is after you've crossed that first threshold question, is you want to ask, is there a potential violation of other laws? One being conflict. You can't be a part of a contract that you might benefit from. And then also, you can't be a subordinate or superior to another elected official. So you can't mingle those. Those would be red flags to look for. Is there gonna be a violation or conflict of interest there? All right? So any questions on that so far? You can go to the next. You can go to the next. That was just there in case you asked me what the duties were. Yep, and you can keep going again. Yep. So here we are. This is just a calculation of looking at, how do we come up with deciding what is an appropriate or fair pay for Board of Trustee members? So look back at the 2022 meeting schedule. And there were totaled about 15 meetings. Three of those were special meetings and 12 of those were your regular meetings. So if you look at what the general pay was for that and you average, you know, just add it up, you're getting paid for 15 meetings. If you divide that out, you can count it out to you're getting about $160 an hour. Your perspective on that can be, is it $160 per hour to attend the meeting? Or if you look at the course over the year, you would consider, okay, about an hour and a half of prep for each meeting, then you're looking more like a $60 an hour and you're being paid for the prep time sort of that's built in. So it really just depends on how you want, what approach you want to take to look at it. And you can look at numbers. If we look at your shortest meeting, which was six minutes, then, you know, you would say if you make it about $1,600 an hour, right? Whereas if you looked at your longest meeting, which was about two and a half hours long, you'd be looking at about $64 an hour. So it really is one, depends on how you want to slice and dice and compare preparation time versus just actual meeting time. But however you slice it up.
Post-work also.
Pardon?
Post-work.
Absolutely. Yes, that's going to be part of tying it together as part of the duties. So we looked at that and to look and see, okay, what would be a good recommendation? And what the committee proposed was to continue with the regular meeting rate of 160 for Board of Trustee meetings. And then other statutory bodies, those range from 125 to 135. And township committee meetings, which range from 135 to 300. And as the board exercises its discretion, things like how much, how complex is this committee, how much prep time is built in? Questions like that can be asked when you determine what the rate for those particular meetings is. It does not have to be the same for all meetings. It can vary based upon complexity and level of involvement. So that is the recommendation. And the next steps would be through September and October, revisiting these adjacent policies, the reimbursement policy, the non-statutory duty policy. But when you're assigning committees, make sure all of that is tightened up in the way the board wants it to be over the next couple of months. And then be prepared for November, when you set the employee compensation for the coming year, as well as issue any new resolutions that might be necessary for Board of Trustee pay as well. And those will be our next steps. So if you have any questions, I can do my best to try to answer them.
Yes. One other thing we had to do on the next step was to walk, we have another assignment that we have to propose to this board is the policy for reimbursement for doing duties that are non-statutory. For example, Margie, you're on the Safety Path Committee, but we want to put you on the Lawn Mowing Committee. You're not, that is not a statutory duty. But if you elect to do it, we have to have a policy says, okay, you're going to get $50 an hour, you're going to do it in two hours, and you're going to do it for 20 weeks. So we have to set a rate.
I accept.
So we're going to work on a policy that says, if John works down in Pontiac on something with the Pontiac government, we're not in a committee, but we have a policy in place to reimburse people to work for Oxford Township in a non-statutory job, but bring information and results back to the community through required board action and approval.
Yeah, and that's a critical component of it because one of the things the law does talk about is you need to have these plans and processes in place prior to approving the payment and such. So just want to make sure those policies are all shored up so that your, you know, eyes got it, teeth scrubbed.
What is your question, trustee Charles?
Well, this sheet you put together, you said, depends on the complexity and commitment. Who determines that?
It would. So if you have a committee where you know that it's going to be very labor-intensive, lots of analysis.
My question is, who determines it?
The board has the discretion. So was your, deciding what that committee is, there could be discussion about, well, this is the kind of work we're going to have to do to prepare. This is the kind of expectations, this is the kind of knowledge that you're going to have to have. And then based on that board discussion, you could come up with what you believe is reasonable.
So that means every committee we have, we'd have to have a discussion ahead of time for every committee we have to determine how much complexity for every meeting we have.
Let me help you with that. Every year, Oxford Township presents committee pay, proposed committee pay to this board. And in there is every commission and committee, what members pay on it. When we vote to approve that, we are saying that complexity gives us this rate. At that time, before the November vote, hopefully, you might come in and say, let me see that and I'll show you exactly what we're proposing for that committee rate.
And then as the time progresses, because when the committee is set, it should be, have milestones, reporting back, what you're going to report and what the expected deliverables are. If it proves to be more cumbersome or more complex, there's an opportunity for the board to revisit and say, well, we need to readjust. That's an opportunity that the board would have at its discretion.
The second change that we're going to do after tonight is, we're going to require committee reports monthly. Currently, committee reports are sent out quarterly and included in the consent agenda packet. Now, we can start off by having monthly reports from the committee and putting them in the consent agenda packet and you can read it, or we can have it verbally reported out at the board by the committee members. This way, we know that committees are actually working. And you'll see the committees that have worked, like tonight, you have three safety pack items on there. That committee has been working. Okay? Our report out tonight is, you're going to look at a first ordinance, you're going to look at a bid acceptance. What's the other one?
Millage.
Millage. So that's a report in a sense, but it's not. A report said, we did this, this, and this. So do we need to do it monthly? I think so. I think it keeps us on our toes. I think it justifies the amount that we compensate committee members for. Some committees meet more often and we need to say, well, how many times did the Water and Sewer Committee meet? Well, we met once, but it was only for four hours. Most committee meetings might be an hour. We have to report out on that to make good decisions on the compensation for committee attendance and work.
So the two takeaways from your comments are, what is monthly reporting, which I think makes sense. Secondly, we would, before the November meeting, decide on the complexity of commitment for every committee.
And that complexity has been set eons ago. Probably every year, we look at it, bump it up $5 or something like that.
And we went to doubling it if you go over four hours.
Correct.
Yeah, I recall that.
So the complexity is considered.
That was a complexity issue. You know, negotiations were taking eight, nine hours a day.
Yep. Trust, our clerk, right?
Yeah, as you know, the board approved this in 2022 to go to quarterly committee meeting reports. And it's been very sporadic of getting those reports from some of the committees. So I think this is a great idea. It creates accountability, but also, we need to set the protocol, who is doing the report on behalf of the committee? So I think this is well overdue to make the board accountable for the actions of what we serve on and also communication out to the public of which we serve.
Duly noted. Trustee Old.
I'll take over with Mr. Wright's comment. We have, each committee has a chair. The chair should be responsible for reporting back to the board on a monthly basis. And thinking through that very quickly, there's some committees that have no activity because election committee doesn't have obligations every month or, so that would probably be nothing to report, correct?
Correct.
So the other part of the issue I'd like to have kind of, what other communities use this type of plan? Were they use a complexity factor in their committee? Do you have any experience with that?
This has been going on for 15 years. Every November, but it was earlier than that. We let the cat out of the bag, but now its evaluations are based on performance. Our committees are then just looked at in a sense, hey, it's always been this, we always pay this.
The other comment I'd like to make is that if we make a new committee mid-year, there has to be a great deal of thought to that, of what that committee's responsibilities are, what the objectives would be back to the board and a reporting basis if we're required to report on a monthly basis.
Yes.
So our committees, in a sense, are becoming more and more visible and more and more important for feedback to the board.
There's a lot of work that gets done in committee. And this board should take recommendations from those committees and value them either to a or nay when it comes to voting. And respect of the committee work is, in essence, reading what the monthly report will show you. Trustee Charles?
Two comments to that point you just made there. I would agree with what you said about committees. I've been part of other municipality meetings, et cetera, council meetings, et cetera, different townships, and sometimes they can drag on forever because in effect, they do their committee meeting at their board meeting. So this is a great idea to do it. Committees and the board takes the, normally takes the recommendations of the committee. So I like that thought. Second, on the township, other statutory body, that comment you have up there. You put on 25 bucks, on 35 dollars. Why don't you just make it simple, 130 bucks instead of, it seems kind of Mickey Mouse?
So that is just a demonstration of your lowest pay for a committee is 125, the highest was 300. So at the time the committee is formed, you would be able to say, okay, attendance in a meeting is 125 for the, and let's say you had a social committee, maybe you get nothing for that one, but you have, you know, a community safety enhancement committee and you say, okay, that one, we're going to make 150 per meeting. And then the single hauler, you're getting 200 a meeting for that, whatever, whatever it is. That's what that range is there for. It's because we use your existing. You're already sort of using.
We took it for granted, the history of the committee and the pay of that committee. And now what we're saying is, we have to look at these committees and the work product that they present to us and determine the compensation based on the complexity of that committee's work. Come to a water and sewer committee and talk about the hundreds of millions of dollars in sewer repairs, all the way down to that Connor Treatment Plant. We have our engineer going to five, six meetings a year on the Oakland County Interceptor. These things bang on us with complexity that most people don't understand. And by the time you deep dive into that, it's horrendous, the amount of time it takes in that committee and outside of the committee. Treasure Frye, you've been holding your hand up for a while.
I have a question for you. I know some committees do a yearly stipend. Have you looked at that as maybe, let's say, if trust these $2,000 hours a year and covers everything? What's the merits of that?
That's an option and we probably look at that more like sort of as a salary. It's.
No, and I'll give you an answer to that, Joe. The Gypsy Moth Committee, how many times did they meet? Six, maybe?
Or at least, I mean.
This year and last year's different. Okay, but six years. How do you say, all right, if I give you a salary for the year trustee, $3,000, and you go to six meetings and then someone down here goes to 12 meetings, the fair and equitable way is in paying per meeting and the work product from that meeting. If I peanut butter a salary across everybody, why would I want to be on a committee? Why would I want to engage? Why would I want to bring knowledge? Why would I want to work with our attorneys or our fire chief and sit through negotiations? You know, that takes it away from the wage. And we talked about, like Margie, how many hours did you spend on the union negotiations? Probably 60?
Way more than that.
Okay, 60 hours and you make $135 per committee meeting. So, or would you make $2,000 in the salary? So we weigh it out and per meeting is probably the fairest to the township, fairest to the people that sit on the committees.
I have another question then. So like SEMCOG, for example, is an alternate delegate. I enjoy those meetings. I give feedback, which I hope people appreciate and read.
Yes.
They have meetings, kind of, three years. We all get DMAs from them. So maybe for myself, I enjoy them. I hope there's some value to the township when I go to these meetings. How do we do that as far as my attendance or Joe's attendance at these meetings? Because they have quite a few of them. Literally every week, there's at least one.
Part of setting up the committee, we set those guidelines in the front and it's a good question because as a member, as a trustee, I did the Oakland County Chapter of Michigan Townships Association. I did the Village Planning Commission. I did the Township Planning. I did the Board of Trustees. All things, you could have 10 meetings a week. Is this a viable meeting for you to attend? Some of that is internal intestinal fortitude to say, no, I'd go to that for my own, it's my statutory duty. But I don't want you going there, learning something, bringing something valuable back and not being compensated for it. John worked his bottom off on the single hauler. And quite frankly, he wasn't, it was all statutory duties. And in order for him to be compensated for that, we would have had to have the policy in place. We would have to say, this board approves John working 24 hours to bring this work product back outside of committee.
For some of the committees that you already have established and things like that, you could, you know, when you go to set the, set the new salary, we would want to make sure that we had a template for all the questions that you ask, expected number, expected percentage to attend, expected length. And then you could set there and set, you know, for an example like that, you would set up a max. You can go to this many and then we reevaluate, see if it's valuable, we want you to continue. You have discretion to fully set that up. And then to the prior point about the salary, the other part of that that makes it less favorable to every member of the board is that trustees have to have the same salary. You can't have a tenured trustee that has 10,000 and a newbie that, you know, gets 2,000. The trustee's salary would be the same for everyone. So if you have a very active trustee that's on a lot of committees and you don't opt in the per meeting pay as well, you might, you know, make 10 cents an hour while somebody else is making $200 an hour because they only go to one. So that's the other reason we would, the committee sort of recommended looking at the per pay as opposed to a salary.
The biggest part of these committee meetings is statutory work on the committee, number one. The thing that we are charged with is integrity. I'm not going to 32 SEMCOG meetings because I need $3,200. I'm going to these SEMCOG meetings because I'm bringing valuable information back for our community. I'm not, I'm not holding a Safety Path meeting three times a month and have no output. It's our personal integrity that should tell us, look, guys, gals, it's us working for the community. We're here for the money. I know I'm in the wrong place. So trustee Old, do you have one more question?
Just a point. All this ends up at the, reporting goes to the clerk's office.
Yes.
And I think some thought needs to be given to a standardized reporting method that when the clerk's office receives end of month work, so to speak, that it can go through their office in a fashion that simplifies and keeps things easy for them to work with.
You could build that into your revised policy.
You mean as far as compensation to each person?
No, as far as the reporting of.
Oh, yes, yes.
It can get rather difficult sometimes, at least on my part, keeping track of all those, all those meetings. And then I'm sure the way I turn it in might be different from the way trustee Payne would turn it in.
That's a great point. So shoring up those policies about how, when, and then the monthly reporting, as well as the monthly reconciliation of payments, that could all tie in together very nicely the way you're describing.
Try not to make more work to make less work.
Right, exactly.
Believe me, we're not going to be in the salary compensation meeting after January because we have to propose evaluation appraisal raises for 2024 in our November meeting. So we'll have a couple more meetings. We'll set the policy and pay for outside work and the statutory duties. We'll have some more language in there. After that, the salary compensation committee meeting might not need until the next question comes up eight months from now. So that's the kind of thing that clerk Wright and Susan McCall watch and report out to us to make sure we're doing the right thing. That's the stopgap, if you will. All right, if there's no more questions, thank you.
You're most welcome.
And we have work to do. That also includes updating our employee handbook. So we'll have all that at a future board meeting. All right, unfinished business. Here's the best one. Item 11B. All three, all four of us are just standing at the podium here for the North Area Sanitary Sewer Bid Award. I'm going to ask Jim to come up and if you will, just give us a brief synopsis, if you will. I'm going to ask Jim to come up and if you will, just give us a brief synopsis, if you will.
Brief synopsis.
How long did it take?
I don't know how we can be brief when this project seems like it's been going on for years. But yeah, you should have my report. It's dated September 7th for this project right here, which is a new 18 day sanitary sewer line. I'm sure you're all very aware of it, extending essentially from the village limits up to Dunlap Road. We put that out for bids, we finally got all of our permits with MDOT and we did receive five bids. Those bids ranged from roughly 2.9 million to 3.9 million. The low bid was submitted by, submitted by DePonyo Contracting. We were able to get references from them. We looked at their subcontractors and they appear to be able to do the work. Done lots of jobs like this, they've been around for a very long time. And so on that basis, you know, we would have no objection to the board's, I guess, consideration of awarding a contract to DePonyo Contracting.
When we first started off with an estimate, what was the estimate?
2.5? About 2.5 million?
Yeah, it came in at 2.9 because of the dragging out from MDOT on the permitting of the bore, it raised our cost almost $400,000.
So, but with that, you know, before we award anything, I think based on the timeline, which is the next one, I don't know that we want to actually award the contract to DePonyo at this time. I think we want to make sure that the special assessment goes through before you actually award the contract. And again, maybe Ms. Ellis has, could speak to that with regards to the timeline that's coming up.
So upon acceptance of the North Area Sanitary...
Correct, just my initial thoughts are, we don't want to award a contract. We want to enter into a contract with a contractor and then something fall apart with the SAD and then we still have a contractor on the hook with them. But again, that's for, that's legal expertise there, that's my opinion. And I believe that that fits in with the timeline, which is the next one on the agenda. So I don't know how you want to tie these two together.
Upon acceptance of the, go ahead.
I can speak to that. So next meeting, the supervisor's going to report on your special assessment role, which he's going to prepare based upon this recommendation from your engineer as to the bid. At your next meeting, you'll have a resolution before you to move forward with your public hearing. At that point, it would be appropriate to tentatively approve the bid conditioned upon the special assessment role being approved by the Board of Trustees at your November meeting.
I have a question for Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, trustee Payne.
So if we wait a month or possibly two, is that price locked in at 2.9?
Yes, we, when we put the bids together, it was clear that the bids were to be held for 180 days.
Okay.
So we have up until that time to actually issue a notice to proceed to a contractor.
Okay.
So what, if you would please, it would be wise not to award the bid tonight?
Correct, so what you're doing tonight is considering your engineer's recommendation, you can accept his recommendation, and next meeting, basically you'll be reviewing the assessment role and at that time you can tentatively approve the bid. We'll also be setting the hearing for, to approve the special assessment role for your November meeting. And that will give you time before December when your board of review meets to put it on your tax rolls.
Thank you. I know this is wearing us all out because we've been all working on it very hard. So would I table this, knowing that the next meeting, we are going to talk about this bid in the role assessment? Or would I postpone it?
If you're going to pick it up off a table at a specified date, you would postpone.
You postpone to a specific date, table, if you don't know when you're going to pick it up.
I'm going to post, I make a recommendation, we postpone this until the October 10th Township Board Meeting. 11th? 11th? I went to look at my calendar, I have corrected myself to October 11th.
Second.
I have a motion to postpone till October 11th and I have a second by trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Roll call, please. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne? Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, item 11C, North Area Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District Timeline. Who wants to talk about this? You know, I'm looking at you. Thank you, Brittany.
Yes, so I went over this a little bit in your earlier discussion regarding your contractor. So this is the most aggressive timeline that we can pursue under state law that we've put together. As we discussed at your next meeting, which is October 11th, your supervisor is going to report the special assessment role based on the bid that you have been presented with tonight by your engineer. At that time, you will move to accept the special assessment role. It will then go to the clerk and will be available for review by the public until your November meeting. At your November meeting, we're going to have your second hearing of the SAD on your special assessment role. At that time, the public will be able to appear and object, if that's their prerogative, to your proposed SAD. After the close of that hearing, it will be time for the board to make a determination on whether you want to approve the special assessment role as presented. Following that, there are some dates that are going to come up that you need to work out with your bond counsel, which we've discussed and it's my understanding that you have been in contact with your bond counsel and those dates are still TBD.
We are working. Clerk Wright and I have talked with Paul Stotter. Jim has been engaged. Danielle is working on it also, I know you're going to be engaged in it. We're talking about inclusivity of all the expenses, so we get a total to charge the SAD. We've talked to Tom Collis from our bond counsel to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And Paul Stotter is working to get the best price on the bond for us. So one item, we want to continue to move fast with this because as I indicated, in six months, our cost went up almost $500,000 in, in increase in material and labors based on engineering estimates. This dragging of the feet of MDOT cost us that much money. So the longer we wait, the harder these contractors are to line up, the harder it is to get the material and the permitting is all done right now and we are on a timeline with permits. They're only good for a year and we have a lot of work to do to make this schedule. I'm even up for, even up for a, suggesting a special meeting should we get things done in time and move forward with this timeline. Are there any questions on the timeline? Seeing none. We'll get off that. Item 11D, Lakeville Road Safety Path Bit Award. Chairman Ferrari?
Board members of Safety Path Committees, we're looking at the Lakeville Road Safety Path. The board requests we send that out for bids. Got a low bid from Jacklin Contracting to get that completed, yeah, this year. I move to award the Lakeville Road Safety Path Project to Jacklin Contracting LLC, the base bid price of $147,535. This $147,535 amount due expense to Safety Path Fund 297.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Board members, item 12, oh no, item 11E, Office Operations Liaison. Board members, we brought this from the Compensation Committee to the last meeting. It was voted down because we had some conflicts of what the Compensation Committee... This thing's too big as guys, small. The Compensation Committee was charged with doing compensation review, but in our review, we found that a lot of operations stuff was not being done by the right person as we're grow, and not by the right person, but by the appropriate individuals. As we moved forward, we kept identifying things like committee report outs, the budgeting for sewer increases, water rate billing, water rate questions from our organization. And it was offered up to have an Office Operations Liaison take the work from clerk Wright, Treasurer Ferrari, some for myself, some from other areas of the township that aren't being done and form a new position in the township. So I would move to approve the Office Operations Liaison job description and authorize Supervisor Jack Curtis to recruit, hire and fill the Office Operation Liaison position at a salary range between 60,000 to 75,000, depending on experience and qualification, and to include all benefits afforded to a full-time Oxford Township employee.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Curtis. I have a second by trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Charles?
No.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, trustee Noel?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails. Okay. Treasurer Ferrari, you're going to be busy. Item 12A, new business, Safety Path Millage Ballot Language.
Board members are looking to put in some Safety Path Millage Ballot in our November election. We had the attorney's office draft everything, so we're looking for board approval to put that on November 2024 general election ballot. It'll be half a mill for like 10 years.
Questions? Yes, sir, clerk Wright?
I contacted Oakland County Elections this morning, wanting to know whether or not this is early to put a ballot language question on the ballot 14 months before an election. And they didn't seem to have a problem with it. But the problem I have is that, is the $482,649.62 going to be the same ballot language when it gets ready to be submitted for approval on the, I shouldn't say approval, because if you approve this, this is what you're approving tonight to go on the ballot in 2024. So if that number changes, I would probably request the board to hold off instead of having to do this twice to proposal of Safety Path Millage. But if you want to move forward to see if the flavor of the board is to move forward and you take your vote.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt a Treasury of Oxford Safety Path Millage Resolution as presented, attaches the pen to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Payne. Clerk Wright, you have a question?
Just in the body of the memo, these figures may change as we get closer to the election and have preliminary 2024 taxable value calculations solved. My question is, are the numbers going to change?
They may when that time gets closer.
And the odds are of that changing?
Pretty strong, there's a lot of values for 2024 available. This is how these starts the ball rolling. We always go back to the board and change one number in the resolution. So the 42 would be blank. And I talked to Brittany about all that and they were comfortable with it.
Trustee Noel?
That was my question, is this a good business practice to do it 14 months ahead of time?
I know. Trustee Payne?
I, I think the committee's notion was, we need to know where we stand with the board to see if we have the support to go forth with the Safety Path Millage for our planning purposes. If we think that this is something we're going to have for future, it's even possible that we could conceivably have a millage. We wanted to know if we have the support of the board.
Can we? I don't have an answer for you, but I think the vote will tell you.
Exactly, and that's why we're doing this.
Yeah, fire and police coming right after this.
Yep.
No, that's my question basically is, does it necessarily have a vote on a potential millage? We feel, just looking for opinions.
If, if you vote yes for this, you're going to have a Safety Path Millage.
With a specific dollar out though.
That can change.
That dollar will change. Any other questions? Roll call. Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Trustee Charles?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Item 12B, schedule the first reading of ordinance 117.001, Safety Paths and Sidewalks.
Board members, we'd like to start revising our Safety Path ordinance for our policies that have been first reading. So this would start that ball rolling. I'll make a motion to authorize a setting of a first reading of the proposed changes, chapter 42, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 3, Safety Paths and Sidewalks, i.e. the Safety Path ordinance at October 11th, 2023, Oxford Township Board of Trustees meeting.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Good for bringing this out like this, we all have approximately 30 days to read it because it's in your packet tonight. So the first reading, if it passes, we will have plenty of time to review it. So is there any other questions? Roll call. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Can I just do a quick backseat for 12A? Does it mean that the board does not want a Safety Path Millage? They don't like the language?
They, it says a Safety Path Millage Ballot Language. I like it.
So, so it's done?
Yep.
So it won't be on the ballot in 2024?
That's what I see.
Okay, so nothing to do with the dollar, or they just don't want it on the ballot?
Unless you bring it back up again.
Okay, okay. I just want to get back to my committee, I mean, I don't have to deal with it.
We have a first reading next month, we put that on the list. Trying to be real good at adding things so we don't have amended agendas because we haven't tonight, first reading. Okay, item 12C, Roof Repair Bid. The capital improvement team met and at the direction, we got a review of the roof on the township building. We had it inspected by Royal Roofing. In your packet tonight, Royal Roofing put out a very comprehensive detailed note about the roof, finding some areas that are needed dramatically, some you could postpone, some you could patch. But most of all, they're saying, we need a new roof. Royal did include a cost to repair all three sections of the roof on the township building, but according to our procurement policy, we have to send it out to bid. So with this, with this proposal, we're saying that we want to go out to bid for a qualified contractor to install a new roof. We'll have to run the bidding process and come up with a appropriate bidder. Any questions?
Are you in agreement? Are you in agreement?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
What, what I...
I know you probably met with Dan and talked about it, yeah.
We've talked to Joe, the guy that came out, went up on the roof, he and his apprentice, and they walked around and said, you can, you can tar that, but you have another three years on the rest of the roof. So, or you can flash this, and he also pointed out some other problems on the building. Part of this building is, what, 15 years old? Part of it's seven years old, part of it's been repaired. So clerk Wright?
Will there, will there be a consideration of a metal roof?
A metal roof is very expensive and we, if you want, make, put it in the motion.
What do you mean by expensive, compared to 100,000?
Three times that.
I move to authorize the capital improvement committee, in consultation with the township attorney, to issue a request for proposal for selection of a qualified contractor and saw a new roof, to the township parliament get any necessary repairs. Cost of project is not to exceed $100,000, is to be expensed at account number 101265976.001. number one-on-one-two-six-five-nine-seven-six-point-zero-zero-zero. Additions and improvements.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item twelve D, twenty twenty-three Parks and Recreation Debt Millage Rate Approval. Treasurer Ferrari?
Our board members read our calculation for the bond debt for the parks improvements. This year, we're looking at only eleven point one-nine of a mil. Nationally, the voters approved up to, it was point three of a mil. So each year, as we've grown, we're paying less and less for it. I move to set the Parks and Recreation twenty twenty debt millage rate at zero point one-nine-zero-zero of a mil, authorized based on the December twenty twenty-three tax rule.
I'll second that.
Okay, did I hear the date right?
December twenty-three, to be in that tax rule.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Trustee Noel?
I spent a little time looking through that. I appreciate the way that was put together. I appreciate the, truly appreciate the fact that the rate has gone down when we could have done some other things with that rate. So thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Sorry. Check in, oh, sorry.
Oh, twenty twenty-four.
You've got a phone on this one, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. No, but it's twenty twenty-three millages. Not twenty twenty-four.
Tax rate?
Yep, but it's twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Item twelve E, twenty twenty-three tax rate request, L four-O four-zero-two-nine approval. Board members, we have to approve property tax levied on real property and report to the county by September thirtieth, and we are here at September thirteenth, so this board meeting is when we normally do the tax.
I move the following millage rates to be levied and collected December one of twenty twenty-three. General property tax on all real personal property, the township of Oxford within the township, are the current tax rule an allocated millage of zero point eight-eight-four-two of a mil for township operations, voter authorized millage of zero point nine-six-nine-eight, a mil for Parks and Recreation, three point eight-zero-nine-one mils for police contracting, unincorporated portion of the township only, four point three-nine-nine-seven mils for fire operations, MS Advanced Life Support, zero point six-two-seven-one of a mil, and zero point six-six-nine-one of a mil for Oxford Public Library, zero point zero-zero-zero mils for North Oakland Transportation Authority, and zero point one-nine-zero-zero of a mil for Parks and Recreation Bond Debt.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
No. Item twelve F, budget approvals.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four general fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at four million eight-on-one-six-twenty-seven-point-seven-seven, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at zero point eight-eight-four-two mils, and attaches spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four road fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at two hundred thousand seven hundred dollars, attaches spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none? Item...
We got a vote on it?
Oh, yes, I said yes. I thought I did.
Oh, we got a vote on it, right?
We all did.
Did you already vote on it, bro?
No.
Oh, maybe I missed it.
Roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Park Department Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at seven million eight-fifty-eight-four-ninety-nine-fifty-two, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at four point three-nine-nine-seven mils, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Treasurer Ferrari. You're welcome. I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Police Contracting Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at five million six-fourty-two-hundred, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at three point eight-zero-nine-one mils, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Parks and Recreation Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at zero point nine-six-nine-eight mils, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Parks and Recreation Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at four hundred thousand dollars, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Cemetery Maintenance Fund Budget with the revenues and expenditures balancing at four hundred thousand dollars, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Telecommunications Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at fifteen thousand oh-eleven, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? I thought I saw a hand go up, that was, whoa! Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Building Department Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at four hundred and thirty-two thousand, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? I thought I saw a hand go up, that was, whoa! Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Building Department Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at four hundred and thirty-two thousand, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Cable TV Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at three hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel, or Trustee Charles, I'm sorry. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Safety Path Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million, one-twenty-seven, seven-twenty-five, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel, or Trustee Charles, I'm sorry. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Pavilion Railway Management Council Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at eighty thousand dollars, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Pavilion Railway Management Council Fund Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at eighty thousand dollars, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I voted twice on that.
I'm good.
Put them on the election today. I move to approve, well, that green shoe must be going over.
It's bleeding over.
I'm sorry. I must, I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four North Oakland Transportation Authority Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at six million five ninety-nine-eight-fifty-four, and to spread the property tax millage rate to be levied at zero point zero-zero-zero mils, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin, and zero-zero-zero-zero mils. Because of the RTA millage that was levied by the county, we are not, and this is the record recording, we are not adding the point-two-five that we are authorized to collect up to. Motion, I called that. Call the roll, please.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty-four Oxford Public Library Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million nine-thirty-zero-zero-one-point-zero-zero, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at zero point six-two-seven-one mils, and zero point six-six-nine-one mils, equal to one point two-nine-six-two mils, attaches spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by two trustees. I'll give this one to Noel, he was louder. zero zero mills because of the RTA millage that was levied by the county, we are not, and this is the record recording, we are not adding the point two five that we are authorized to collect up to. Um, motion, I called that, call the roll, please.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended twenty twenty four Oxford Public Library Budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million, nine thirty, zero zero one point zero zero, based on the property tax mills rate to be levied at zero point six two seven one mills, and zero point six six nine one mills, equal to one point two nine six two mills, attach those spreadsheets appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Uh-oh. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by two trustees, I'll give this one to Noel, he was louder. Are there any questions?
Should we vote on that?
Roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Uh, board members, twelve G item, annual MERS, extra compensation contribution from the general fund to the fire MERS and police MERS that we are liable for.
Uh, board members, I should know Supervisor Curtis has us doing allocation next year to kind of get our MERS obligation taken care of with the fire department. We still have this little motion on the books, so we probably want to take care of that for this year so that it is not going to continue once we're fully funded next year. I make a motion of the Oxford Township Board Trustees negates its January thirteenth, twenty sixteen, MERS pension funding motion of contributing twelve thousand one hundred dollars from the general fund in Oxford Fire Department as it will be funded in highest MERS category in the very near future. The last year of this extra funding allocation, we budget year twenty twenty two.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Okay, I'm gonna go at firsthand, I saw Clerk Wright?
Yeah, just, just a clarification on the motion. Usually you will rescind the motion versus engagement. Because it's previously on the books.
You didn't catch that one.
No.
I didn't catch it either.
Sorry.
So we wrote this one down, and then reread the motion, rescind?
I don't know that it really makes a difference in the language, negate or rescind?
Negate or rescind?
Well, negate means it never existed, rescind means you pull it back.
Go with rescind. Rescind is fine.
Does negate work or no?
Well, your trustee, Rod Charles, just gave a great definition as to why rescind.
So then you vote no on this one, and change it to negate to rescind.
Okay.
Roll call.
Trustee Coleman?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Uh, Trustee Charles?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
No.
I make a motion of the Oxford Township Board Trustees, rescinds its January thirteenth, twenty sixteen, MERS pension funding, motion of contributing twelve thousand one hundred dollars from the general fund in Oxford Fire Department as we will be funded in highest MERS category in the very near future. The last year of this extra funding allocation, we budget year twenty twenty two.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? She's getting louder, John. Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel? Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Uh, board members, I just want to say, we did work with Reina, and we are moving a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to the MERS compensation fund for twenty twenty four. Reina tells us that will put us above the ninety percent, and that is the range that graded at ninety percent is graded the same as a hundred percent in MERS contribution funding for the year. Okay, nine, twelve H, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, EDP grant funding.
Uh, board members, every year we get our EDP funds, we finish getting our last payment in August. Each year we spread that amongst other taxing units, and they show and recommend the same. Uh, I would like to make a motion, authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari, sign a one-year subscription contract invoice with Green Ettrix LLC, now three thousand seven eleven point zero zero, in order to meet the state of Michigan, report requirements to secure economic vitality, the center program, EVIP funding, as further understood the thirty seven eleven fee, which is subtracted from the sixty five thousand three thirty three EDP grant, leaving fifty six thousand seven fifty to be dispersed to the Oxford Township local taxing units, based on twenty twenty two township militaries, and four thousand nine oh seven can be designated to the Oxford Township Fire Fund to help pay its outstanding pension obligations.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Clerk Wright, you're handling it, boy, you're a rock.
It did, it did, because on this, I don't know a whole lot about it, thank you Treasurer Ferrari for doing this, but, um, my concern is that the, it says retirement pension fund system underfunded, the fire department is not underfunded, because by statute, they're over sixty percent funded per, per, uh, what does it say, MCL two oh two, two thousand seventeen, section thirty eight point two eight oh five, section five, some section B, so, so I, what I'm, my thinking is that, um, I'm not opposed if the money's going there, but are there other, uh, taxing entities that have the same type of retirement system that they could use some of that money as well? I don't know the answer to that.
Only thing I know is fire, and I don't want to get the state looking at our funding because the way they give us that money is like, it has to be allocated that way. What are they interpreting, our interpretation? Could be totally different. I agree with you, Jack. Ninety percent's a hundred, they may look at and say, it's not a hundred, for forty nine hundred bucks, I don't want to get their higher.
No, but you want it to be right.
So what you're doing is you're allocating funds to the local government agencies that have militaries?
Correct.
Since the fire department has a millage, they are getting four thousand?
They're getting their millage, and this is for the pension reduction.
So, did you take that much from the other?
No, I took that right off the top.
So you did take it away from everybody else?
Yep. That's been going on the last eight years. Eight years, I think, now.
Okay. So you're right.
Yeah, that, that's okay. Um, yeah, but that's my, it's too not following this closer.
I know, mine too.
Um, but, um, just my thinking too is that, uh, I did see the bill already to be paid, we have not approved that in the packet, so I don't know if that's the same protocol we're gonna follow going forward, but, um, I think, I think if that's the bill, the board should approve that before it goes for payment.
Is it approved on the bill run?
It was approved in the...
Is that in the... Is that in the... Okay. I must have missed that.
Yes.
My apologies on that.
Um, now, my question is, that four thousand dollars is miniscule. By the time you go back and put it in the sixty five and break it out, this could be the last year you're allocating special monies to the MERS fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Because you'll have the one seventy five in. I can justify saying, I'm a hundred percent funded.
Right. You didn't know that when this EDP...
And this is twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, may not be twenty twenty four money.
Right.
It won't be funded till Jan... Well...
I understand it.
So I, I guess my question too is, going forward, it will be the same process?
No.
We don't have to fund that anymore.
Twenty three, you won't have to fund the twenty three EDP money in twenty four to the fire fund.
So you won't break the money out?
I don't have to.
You don't have to, yes, you're correct.
Jack's got a hundred seventy five going in our twenty twenty four budget.
Right. We're trying to make the MERS whole, we're basing it on Reina, this is twenty twenty two money, so it can go in there based on the motion, and then twenty three monies, after we get the fund over the ninety into Reina accepting it, that way, twenty, and when we do this next year, there, you won't see the call out for four thousand nine hundred dollars to be designated.
Correct.
Correct? Understood?
Any pension plan that's ninety percent funded is exemplary.
Yes.
Most of them already come close to that.
Yes. By consent, Oxford Township has to pay for the old police and fire of the village and the township for their pension fund. This board has worked diligently over the past six years, eight years. It was low, it was below seventy, it was in the sixties. So we've worked hard to get it up there, plus the interest rates have been in our favor, the market's been good, so we've gotten it well over ninety.
Anyone over eighty is considered good in the marketplace, so we're, we're way above average.
Yes. So with that, I'll call the roll.
Uh, Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Board members, uh, we're gonna go to twelve I, part-time wage rates. Um, Curtis, it says when the township board eliminated grade and step for salaries and wages, there was no wage established for part-time employees. Um, we have two approved part-time employee positions, one in the building department for a school intern, and one during, uh, election time in the clerks department. Those wage rates were not, uh, brought in front of the com, the board, so tonight we are bringing them, uh, in front of the board, so I would move to approve the following ra, wage rates for the approved part-time employees effective immediately. Fifteen dollars an hour per starting wage, seventeen fifty per hour for short term, less than ninety days of employment, part-time employees to be improved, approved by part-time employees direct supervisor, twenty dollars per hour for long term, greater than ninety days of employment, part-time employees to be approved by the part-time employees direct supervisor.
I will second that.
Motion by Supervisor Curtis, second by Treasurer Ferrari. Questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Boy, we went through a lot of stuff here, really. Amen. Uh, board members, item twelve J, which we added to the amended agenda, the master plan steering committee pay. Uh, at our last special meeting with the planning commission, ZBA and Township Board, we approved the adoption of the master plan, but, uh, in that master plan, it called for a steering committee, and the steering committee is to be made up by residents. We have one here tonight, and, uh, formally, uh, the consultant indicates that, uh, we should compensate, um, any member of the steering committee like we do any committee in the township. Uh, you can either do it at the end, or you can do it per attendance, and, uh, acting on the advice of the, uh, Carlisle Warpman, I would move to approve the compensation in the amount of one hundred and forty dollars per attended meeting for the residents selected to work on the township master plan. All charges to be charged to account number one zero one dash seven zero one dash eight zero one dot zero zero one, Planner Professional Services Master Plan.
Seconds.
Mr. Noel?
He's second.
He's second. Okay, thank you. There you go. Motion by Supervisor Curtis, second by Trustee Noel. Is there any questions? Yes, Clerk Wright?
Is it, is there a, a amount of people that will be, residents that will be sitting on this? Will it be, I guess, two questions. Will there be business people on it, or just residents?
There's residents, there's retired, there's men, there's women, there's, um, people that own businesses, yes, uh, through the community, uh, people have stood up.
Do we approve that, bro?
Do we approve it? No, the committee can approve the group. Uh, it's a, a function of the planning commission, and a function of the master plan operation to form the steering committee, but anytime we spend money or compensate someone, we have to have this board's approval. So with that motion, I'll call the roll.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item thirteen, we took nothing out of consent. Now, item fourteen, public comment.
I forgot a couple of things earlier, and first and foremost, I want to, I appreciate and thank you for each time you make that contribution to that MERS fund, that you clarify and let people know that it is not related to the fire department, and just that it falls into our account because of the MERS system and has nothing to do with us, and I appreciate that, so that people don't think that we've mismanaged our funds or something along those lines. It's, it is greatly appreciated. Uh, and the second thing I forgot to tell you, because we just got noticed this afternoon, a couple of things happened, and I slipped my mind, we did get update from our insurance company that I mentioned last month, the damage that both fire stations and the garage at station, uh, behind Station One, uh, sustained as a result of that last storm with all the hail and the doors, uh, it was all completely approved for repair and replacement, um, at both stations, uh, in excess of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Wow.
Which we have to pay a twenty five hundred dollar deductible, and we just got that word today. So, um, that's one really big item that's coming off my capital improvement plan, that's gonna at least see us probably through a good fifteen to twenty years on the roofs, so anyhow, I just wanted to pass that out.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Any other members of the public want to make a comment? Seeing none, board of trustees, comments? I'll start with Trustee Charles.
Uh, just a reminder about the food truck thing we talked about and the single hauler. I have a question, I see that, uh, someone here from the Northeast Oakland Museum, have we had any progress on that form for the donation we made?
Did we get that form? No, we have not got, you're next, Curtis. Do you have any more questions?
No, that's it.
Comments?
In response to that, the form has been provided, there are three other boxes to need to be checked off if they apply to fulfill that requirement to get the money distributed over to the Northeast Historical Society.
Okay.
Uh, a couple of other things, uh, as far as MERS goes, a little tribute over to Trustee